Our job here today is to have Navy Hill Redevelopment Project informational presentation. And just for those of you in the public, and we welcome you here, glad you're with us, this is a presentation to the commission, Planning Commission, with questions from Planning Commissioners for any of the presenters. This is not a public hearing, and there will be no public time for questions or comments. So if we would like to, Ms. Ebert, are you first up? Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairman Poole, esteemed commissioners. We're here today to give you a presentation on the Navy Hill Project. And without further ado, I'm going to start the presentation. As you can see here, there's an outline. I will be doing sort of the introduction, then I'm going to hand it over to our new Economic Development Director, Leonard Sledge. He will give you a broad overview about what the Navy Hill Project is about, and then we will get into specifics. And Jennifer Mullen will be here to drill down into the ordinances and what we're asking you to review. And there'll also be a broader kind of discussion about why the Navy Hill Project is what it is and how it can do for our city what it's done for other cities. So without much to do, let me start. Let me go back. So why are we doing this project? You might recall that we do plans here for a reason. We plan so that we can implement. And back in 2009, the Downtown Richmond Plan was approved by council. And in that plan, it talks about various sections of the downtown. And our convention center area, known as the City Center, the City Center, was talked about in that plan. And it calls about redoing this area of the city and bringing back certain improvements. One is the connectivity of the street network and bringing back East Clay Street and connecting it, as well as connecting the Sixth Street area back to Broad Street. It talks about bringing back mixed use into this area. And then on top of the Downtown Master Plan, from that was the Pulse Corridor Plan back in 2017. And when you think about it, that was only about two, two and a half years ago. And since that time, we've implemented the BRT with the Pulse. It's very successful. But that particular plan, again, called for specific things to happen along the Pulse route. And in particular, let me go back again, in particular, talked about the Convention Center stop and the Government Center stop. And I want to read for you just a few sections of that plan. It talks about the Coliseum and adjacent city-owned parcels, which are an opportunity site that could be redeveloped into a mixed-use, mixed-income, pedestrian-friendly environment that serves as a connection block between the Convention Center, the Biotech Park, and the Capital District. And then it goes on to state in the plan that we are to explore public, private, nonprofit, and profit partnerships to redevelop properties to make this area a dynamic live-work environment. And that is what the Navy Hill Project does. Back in the fall of 2017, we issued an RFP for this north of Broad Street area. We received a proposal in February of 2018, and we've been working with that applicant ever since to be able to create a live-work vibrant downtown city center. And so the other thing that I want to talk about is how this fits in contextually with what else is happening within this particular area. We know that VCU Medical College has a master plan that just came out. When you look in their master plan, they talk about how Clay Street can again be the Main Street and how that can connect their campus and their medical facilities back into this part of the city, how it can connect it back to the Biotech area. And we also look at the Commonwealth's Plan, which also came out this summer, and its connectivity and being able to make this a vibrant part of our downtown. And so where is Navy Hill? As you know, Navy Hill, as it's been designated for this particular project, is just south of I-95 and is surrounded to the north by the Virginia Biotech Research Park, to the east by the VCU Health System and Medical College. Obviously, the City Hall Building backs up to it, but it's also just north of the State Capitol, the central business district of the city's downtown. And most importantly, it is adjacent and just east of our Richmond Convention Center. And so with that, what I'd like to do is turn this over to our Economic Development Director, Leonard Sledge, who's going to give you a broader overview of the Navy Hill Project.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Chairman Poole and distinguished members of the Planning Commission. My name is Leonard Sledge, and I have the privilege of serving as the city's Director of Economic Development. Over the next few minutes, I will be sharing with you, in a broad sense, an overview of the Navy Hill Project and going into a little bit of detail, just to help you better understand some of the mechanisms for the project. So why do we need the Navy Hill Project? One, because this is what our city's center currently looks like today, with a functionally obsolete Coliseum, underutilized city property that's not producing positive revenue for the city. And because we're not simply getting the highest and best use on city-owned property. And because of the planning studies, as alluded to by Ms. Ebert, approved by the city of Richmond, affirms the need for a project that will redevelop the city's center. So when we talk about a transformational mixed-use development, what you see in shaded color -- I promise that wasn't my lunch. The -- what you see shaded is representative of the different aspects of this mixed-use development. And the developer, Mr. Michael Hallmark, will be coming and sharing greater detail about the different components. But again, we just simply wanted to introduce this to you. So one of the key aspects of this is a new 17,500-seat publicly-owned arena, highlighted in blue. It would be the largest in the Commonwealth of Virginia. The arena would be publicly owned, and it would be a 30-year lease for the developer to operate and maintain this facility. And to give you an idea, in 1996, the last time the NCAA tournament was held in the city of Richmond, Virginia, Allen Iverson played his last game for the Georgetown Hoyas. And that's near and dear to my heart, because Allen and I, we played a little bit of football together in the city of Hampton. But since then, the NCAA's have not been back to the city of Richmond. CIWA, if I'm mistaken, we haven't seen a tournament in years, and several other types of tournaments and large sporting events. Also, the project calls for a new 500-plus-room hotel privately funded, also private funding and renovation of the Blues Armory, which would still be publicly owned. And what's significant about a convention, a full-service, rather, convention hotel of this nature and magnitude is typically developers are looking for city participation in some shape, form, or fashion to underwrite their cost and financing. And in this project, it does not call for that. From a residential standpoint, the project calls for close to 2,500 new mixed-income residential units, with 280 affordable units and $10 million to fund 200 more affordable units. And through the surplus revenues generated by the city as a result of this project, there's a pathway to hundreds more affordable units. The project also calls for the development of over 900,000 square feet of Class A office space and over 100,000 square feet of commercial development, primarily ground-level retail. A new GRTC Transfer Center, which Mr. Hallmark will show you some renderings of. And also really exciting is the activation of Clay Street and other public infrastructure improvements. And it should be noted that the public infrastructure improvements will be paid for using private dollars. Going back to the Class A office piece for a second, the city of Richmond has seen some new Class A office development in recent years, but those have all been built to suit projects for existing large tenants. There's new office development going on in the Manchester area, but in terms of a significant block of new Class A office space in the city of Richmond in our downtown area, we are very much in need of that. And the addition of that space in our downtown area will greatly enhance our ability to attract new large corporate users to the city. So how does this all work and get paid for? The city and the Navy Hill District Corporation, we enter into a development agreement, a cooperation agreement, and purchase and sale agreement. The Navy Hill District Corporation pays the city $15.8 million for all of the properties that it wants to own and develop using private funding. And it's important to note that those funds will be placed in escrow, and as each of the publicly-owned properties are taken down for development, those funds will come out of escrow and go to the city. The Richmond Coliseum and the Blues Armory properties are transferred to the Richmond Economic Development Authority, and the Navy Hill District Corporation will undertake $900 million in private development activities contemporaneous with the construction of the new arena. The Richmond Economic Development Authority then enters ground leases with Navy Hill for the arena, a 30-year lease, and the Blues Armory, a 65-year lease. And it's important to reiterate that those two important assets, the Armory and the arena, they remain publicly owned, they are leased to the developer to operate, and they are maintained with private funds. The Richmond Economic Development Authority will issue non-recourse revenue bonds that have no moral or general obligations by the city of Richmond. All that means is that the end of each annual year, or the end of each 12-month period, if there are any shortfalls in the revenue to pay the bonds, it does not fall on the city to make up the difference, whether it be through a special fund, whether it be through a general fund appropriation, it is on the investors themselves to make up any shortfalls in terms of the revenue to pay the bond service debt. And this project does not create any new special tax assessments or tax districts for Richmond citizens and property owners, and that goes back to the non-recourse revenue structure of the bonds. So again, how does this all get paid for, and how does it work? The arena is the only part of the project that is financed with bond proceeds. The sources of funding to repay the $350 million in bond debt service for the arena are incremental new real estate tax from the incremental financing area defined in the agreement, and we will show you an illustration of that incremental financing area, the real estate tax from the new Navy Hill developments defined in the agreement, all of the buildings that you saw in color on a previous slide, new sales tax from the Navy Hill development defined in the agreement, so again, only the new sales tax generated from the buildings that were in color in the previous slide, new lodging taxes from the new hotels developed in the Navy Hill development defined in the agreement, new meals tax from the Navy Hill developments defined in the agreements, with the note that the 1.5% meals tax continues to go to Richmond City Schools, new B-Pole tax, or Business Professional and Occupational License Tax, from the Navy Hill developments that are defined in the agreement, new admissions tax from the Navy Hill developments defined in the agreement, new parking revenue from the incremental financing area. And one important thing to note is there is a baseline revenue figure, and some of the city-owned parking facilities that are not in the immediate area of the development blocks are included as a part of that parking revenue stream, and tax revenue and sponsorships generated by the arena, and also tax revenue generated by the Blues Armory. So what you see here is outlined in red is the incremental financing boundary for the Navy Hill Project. In green, you see all of the taxable parcels inside of the boundary and outside of the boundary. The taxable parcels have an approximate value, assessed value, rather, of $2.1 billion. The non-taxable value of properties in the incremental financing area is just under $1.5 billion. It is important to also note that immediately to the east of the incremental financing area is $1.5 billion of additional assessed non-taxable real estate. So in our downtown area, approximately $3 billion of tax-exempt real estate. And this is our first beautiful animation of today. And we're zooming in to the city's center and into the Navy Hill area. And so again, outlined in red, the incremental financing area boundary, in white, the non-taxable parcels, and in green, the taxable parcels. This is, from a real estate tax standpoint today, what the Navy Hill area looks like. By 2026, this is what we expect it to look like in terms of non-taxable parcels being converted into revenue-generating parcels with new development, as outlined in the Navy Hill proposal. The dark green, you will see, again, the new buildings, the new structures that are added to our city. So why is this project good for all Richmonders? One, it leverages $1.3 billion in private investment. Or another way of saying it is it leverages $1.3 billion of other people's money. It creates 12,500 jobs during the construction phase and over 9,000 permanent jobs, and that's direct jobs, indirect jobs, and induced jobs. It creates 2,500 mixed-income residential units with 280 affordable units and $10 million to fund 200 more affordable units. And what's important to note about that as well is there are opportunities for home ownership as a part of that affordability mix as well. It creates $300 million in minority business participation opportunities. It provides a new GRTC Bus Transit Center. It provides a state-of-the-art arena that, again, will be the largest in the Commonwealth of Virginia at 17,500 seats, programmed for a wide variety of entertainment and meeting needs. It renovates the historic Blues Armory as a new entertainment and event space, again, using private dollars, provides a new 500-plus-room convention-anchored hotel to increase tourism and the use of the convention center here in the city. And one of the things, as we have gone through this project, right now, as a city, we lose out on about 50,000 hotel room nights a year, simply because we do not have the critical mass of rooms in a convention-quality hotel, a full-service convention hotel. The project improves walkability by recreating East Clay Street and Sixth Street, and it helps to attract and retain talent in the city. Over the 30-year period of the project, we anticipate, based on feedback from our financial advisors and the independent assessment of the project, over $1 billion in surplus revenues for the city of Richmond. And the objective is to program those revenues, as outlined above, with 50% going to fund Richmond Public Schools, 34% at $340 million for public safety, public works, and other core city services, 15%, again, to address housing and homeless services, and 1% for the arts, history, and culture. So that concludes the general overview of the project. And at this time, I would like to invite Mr. Michael Hallmark, Mr. Michael Hallmark, excuse me, to come forward and share a little more detail about the Navy Hill Development Team and all other aspects of the project.
This is very swift. Thank you. So I want to first talk about the structure of the Navy Hill Organization. So you see kind of two columns, one representing the arena development component and a second column representing private development. At the top of this, the city, of course, of Richmond is at the top of this chart, but at the, right below that, we have the Navy Hill Foundation, which is made up of civic leadership, people who care about the city, who want to see good things happen to it. That's the foundation board that you see there on the right. Below the board is Navy Hill District Corporation. I represent a component of Capital City Partners. So my colleague, Sean Duncan, is here with me today. Sean and I are members of Future Cities LLC, our development partner in the project, is Concord Eastridge. Susan Eastridge couldn't be here today. One of my personal expertises is in the design and development of arenas, and we'll be talking about that specifically because that's kind of at the heart of this project. Other development, arena development components, consultants, operators, and others are listed on the right. We've been working since the beginning of the project with JP Morgan Chase and Citigroup on helping to analyze revenue streams within the development. Bond Council Maguire Woods, we've had several organizations who have run independent analyses for us on the operation of the arena. Our architects for the project, HOK Sports, are internationally famous for this building type, and we have both local and national contractors working on the project at the moment, doing cost estimating, pre-construction activities right now. Our construction is just finishing up the new Warriors Arena in San Francisco, but they were also the contractor for the arena in DC, the Capital One Center. On the private side, we have an array of organizations that make up Capital City Development. That's the entity where local investors and national investors, institutional investors will be putting their funds, commercial lenders. It's also where our operators for the hotel apartments and other components will be living in this process, along with other independent analyses, market researchers, and brokers. These then are the uses for the mixed-use developments that you're going to see here in a moment. Our mission, project mission from the outset, was to create a project that replaces the Coliseum but does not encumber the city's financial resources in any way. So there was never a moment, at any time, where we imagined that the city would be on the hook, if you will, for this project. So there's no general or moral obligation to the city. One of the reasons it took long for this project to kind of get on paper was looking at every nuance that might come up that would suggest something like that. And so we've worked very hard to make sure that that wasn't in agreement or implied anywhere with the bond underwriting. Another part of the project was to put underutilized city real estate assets to work. One of the things you'll see as we go through the presentation is a lot of the real estate that we're proposing to acquire from the city, it really isn't land that you would imagine is on the market or would ever be on the market. It's leftover residual parcels, and we'll show you how that works in a minute. So my credential in this building world is in arenas. I've done this kind of work for three decades, founded two firms that specialize in design and development of arenas, including 13 NBA NHL arenas and multiple civic arenas in places like Moline and Quad Cities and Spokane. So I have a very good understanding of the full spectrum of how these buildings operate and work. My, I'm presenting kind of our planning arm of the development company to you here as Planning Commissioners. My partner in this is Sean Duncan. Sean has a particular expertise in urban placemaking, had a long tenure with John Gerdy in Southern California. And if you look up placemaking in Wikipedia, you'll see a very select list of people who are credited with that term, and John Gerdy is one of those people. So we feel like we have a good handle on the kinds of things that make for important places within cities. I want to talk for a few minutes, because I think this is important, to put our project in the spectrum of arena-anchored district developments across the country. And we're going to demonstrate or show you a few examples of cities where arena-anchored districts were imagined and executed successfully, and where that's completely transformed these places. It's one of the most effective economic approaches that urban areas can take. You cannot compete in retail. The suburbs can have you for lunch when it comes to building malls, and so it's very difficult for cities to compete. But where you can compete is in creating those one-of-a-kind destination detractors like an arena. It does require a critical mass of real estate in the urban core. Many of the, or some of the developments I'm going to show you required some painstaking assemblage of land, and one of the remarkable things about this particular project, the Navy Hill Project, is all of these parcels are under one ownership. That's very, very important. Obviously requires a high level of cooperation on the public and private side, which is why we're here today, requires a single coherent master plan for development. So this cannot be an organic, if you build it, we hope things will come down the road. So you'll see, as we go further into this process with you, over time, you'll see that the agreements that we have require the private sector to be arm-in-arm with the arena development as it proceeds. So what other cities are doing to combat this decline, there's all kinds of strategies that they've used, but one of the tried and true methods in these cities has been the nature of an arena-anchored district development. And I brought four of them forward. I included Richmond at the bottom here, because I want to show you how these templates in other cities can work successfully, also in Richmond. Probably the father of this notion, the grandfather of this notion even, is the Nationwide Arena District in Columbus. This was the work of one development entity in public-private cooperation nationwide, acquired 75, initially acquired 75 acres of land from the city of Columbus. Without going in, all of these have complex deal structures, so without going into all of those today, I think it's more important to think through what desperate places these cities were in their urban land and how they were able to then craft a way to success. This then represents the first sketch done of the arena district in Columbus. This was done by one of our arena team members, from HOK, who is a part of our arena team here. The project started out, we were able to, thanks to the technology of Google Earth, we were able to go back in time and look at some of these aerials, so that you can see all of these cities had vast areas of open parking lots, producing nothing but parking revenues for the owners. But you can see over time how these master plans were executed. This was Columbus, as I mentioned. It grew from the initial 75 acres to now 175 acres and expanded to include waterfront developments that you see here, over 2 million square feet of office development. This then very quickly is kind of the sequence of how master plans work, but they all involved reintegrating grids back into the city and creating these discrete developments over time. 1995 Columbus on the left, 2018 Columbus on the right. Los Angeles, you may say, yes, but that's a really big city. Again, we're talking about templates and order of magnitude. Los Angeles is exactly what you have here in Richmond. They have streets, they have downtowns, they have retail, they just have it on a bigger scale. So this was my project back in the late 90s in Los Angeles. We were able to convince the owner of the Kings and Lakers to actually think about a district development. Los Angeles, at that time, was suffering from blight downtown. It was losing corporate, it was losing opportunities for corporate relocations to neighboring cities, and it desperately needed to restore downtown as an exciting place. And out of that came, well, you can see here, what's in blue in most of these slides represents parking lots. And parking lots are basically a sign that your city's not particularly healthy. It's fine to have few of them, but if you have this many, there's something wrong. New development represented here in the orange color. The master plan called for the arena to happen on day one, and eventually, a lot of other things came about. Now, interestingly, the developer of this had everything on the left of Figaroa there. So everything on the right is actually the halo effect that came from the development. So after LA Live -- So after LA Live and Staples Center was developed, projects continued to develop. So everything you see there to the right of Staples Center are other developers who enjoyed the benefits of the project. This is downtown Los Angeles today. This was a very, very bad place in Los Angeles when I lived there. Getting closer to Richmond's size in Kansas City, the city again was desperate to find ways to start to bring people back to its downtown. Kansas City also suffered from being right on the border with neighbouring Kansas City, Missouri, right on the border with neighbouring Kansas. So frequently families would live in Kansas and drive to work to Kansas City, Missouri. So the school systems obviously suffered as a result of that. So the city was seeking ways to make its city work again. Continuous urban decline, it's not an unusual story for this period. As I mentioned, movement to the county just across the Kansas border and losses of revenues for underfunded schools. Again, parking lots before the plan started, still 10 years later, still parking lots, nothing happening. The plan was executed, the parking lots were acquired privately, the city participated. And again, these are all very different deal structures. So none of these is what we're proposing necessarily for Richmond, but it's the notion of the anchored development that we're talking about here. The city participated in the arena development, private sector did the rest of the work. And we now have one of the more exciting downtown components in any American city. The Arena Sprint Center doesn't have tenants, it doesn't have, I should say, it doesn't have sports tenants. It still draws a million people annually. It's the most successful arena without a sports tenant anywhere in the country. And this is what it looks like today. And finally, just wanted to show one more. Allentown is, I would guess, I just forgot, I should have looked this up for you, but it's probably half the size of Richmond. Same process, downtown blight, losing jobs. This is a very famous Rust Belt story. Many cities throughout that area suffered this. Again, buildings going, being torn down, parking lots going in place, and then the plan is put in place. In this case, a neighbourhood improvement zone, which is essentially a TIF district. This TIF district in Allentown went to benefit developers. So it's a little bit different than what we're talking about here. The idea is still the same. The anchor-based arena created a master plan that was very successful. Here's some before and after pictures of Allentown. The same thing happened here that happened in Los Angeles, in that the initial master plan did what it was supposed to do. It ignited a fire. It created a nice warm halo effect that affected districts all throughout downtown. And now there's optimism and people moving down and businesses are thriving. You notice one of the trends is the buildings get bigger. So now, we'd like to take these lessons, this template, and focus on the opportunities here in Richmond. One of the things that Richmond has, that many of those sites didn't have, is there are some tremendous assets already in place. You had, you have obviously a grid that works very well, where it's actually, it's actually working to go all the way through. There are some historic building assets here unlike any in the country, so those are very exciting assets for the project. And Richmond follows, I mean, this could be a photograph of many corners throughout America during this era. Transportation, rail transportation, street-level retail, people living on top of retail. These are all models that worked very well and all models we wanted to take with us to the new developments. People ask about the name Navy Hill and going through the archives at the Valentine, we were able to find some interesting photographs that demonstrated businesses in the Navy Hill area. Unfortunately, this happened. It happened both with the freeway, it happened also with the Colosseum. These are things you just don't undo easily, but you can then plan as you go forward to right the ship, if you will. The interesting thing about Richmond is, the same sequence of photographs that you look at from aerial views, nothing changed within the zone that we're talking about. There were activities at the Tech Park, there were some activities at the Health Systems Campus, but nothing within the Navy Hill development zone that we're talking about. So these remained fallow, if you will, for all those years. No plan to develop until this plan came along, and that's where we start. We start with the, some of the core design elements that Ms Ebert referenced in the post-corridor plan. And this is bound up in our agreements, so we are very aware of that. We have our own, however. These are capturing urban real estate in places where it didn't exist before, creating permanent and vibrant resident community, creating interdependent blocks and sub-districts. That's something you get to do if you're master-planning multiple blocks, something you cannot do if you're doing this block by block. So that becomes a very important feature for the project. And creating a variety of buildings. So it's, at this point, you know, we're still, you know, we're still kind of at a high level, but as we get more and more fine-grained with the design, there'll be more texture, there'll be more variety. What happens in the first 30 feet of a building is very important to us. Probably the most important aspect of this project is to reopen the grid that was interrupted by the Colosseum and the Convention Center developments. So Clay Street, basically between 3rd all the way to 10th or 11th functions on just one block. 6th Street doesn't function at all between Marshall and Clay, nor does Lee Street function in a normal way. It dips down, as you know. So these then become, we're going to show a few more of these kinds of plans, but these become the principles that we're abiding by to create a more active street, more connected streets, more walkable streets. Leonard already showed some of these, I won't dwell on them, but this becomes our master plan of uses. We are, the $900 million that you've heard reference to is involved in about five of those blocks on day one. So we would evidence those developments. Bond buyers are going to want to know that too, just like the city is, how do these things get developed? Just a little bit more on the street. This is, this is the interrupted Clay Street that we were talking about a moment ago. And so one of the big important features of being able to do this as a master plan is that we were able to create a coherent Clay Street all the way from the Convention Center, all the way to the Transit Center, all the way to the Valentine, and then all the way to VCU's Health Systems Campus. And this is, this is one of the reasons why our VCU neighbours next door have been so supportive of this project, because they need this kind of an environment to attract new researchers, to attract residents, to keep talent in Richmond after people graduate from the universities. Here's a few, just like the other projects, a few befores and afters. This is Fifth and Clay in the proposed district. This is the current GRTC Temporary Transfer Center on 9th. And where we propose it to go, this was, this was one of the requirements in the RFP, something we hadn't thought about. The more we have been working with the GRTC folks, the more we like this idea. We think it creates a destination aspect to the project. We've sort of joined hands and said, let's not call this a transfer center, let's call it a transit center. So all roads lead to downtown and we should embrace that idea. So on that particular block, we're using most of it to create, at the ground level, a bus island, so for 12 bus berths. Nobody has to cross the street. They, once they're there in the system, they can change buses without having to cross. On top of that, we would build a plinth and then two development components, one a residential component and one an office component. Here then is a view in that plinth area. So again, we're at grade, the new developments happen on top of this. So it's a very protected environment, it's sheltered, it provides opportunities for a much more humane way to engage bus transit and bus systems. Here's a before and after view of 8th and Clay. And the famous Crystal Palace would be removed and 6th Street would be reopened. And here's a view looking south along 6th Street. And a reconfigured armory, which we'll talk about in a moment. So one of the things interesting about parking garages is they come in very specific modules. So if you're a multiple of 60 feet, you can be, you can be 120 feet, you can be 180 feet, but if you're a little bit more than that, then you have extra land that you don't use. And that's what happened when these garages were built around the Colosseum, it left some extra land. We'd like to, rather than do this kind of a thing with it, we'd like to demolish that and build residential wraps around these garages. We think that adds, one of the principles we're trying to do here is to make these garages look better, but also act better. So we would be populating them with people living there of the right scale. This is the hotel connected to the armory, and then finally, the overall perspective of the project. The armory is of particular interest to us. I think the more we got into this project, the more we fell in love with this building. I think it's the most interesting aspect of the entire development. I think it's a shame that it's in the condition it's in, but I also understand why that's the case. It needs, it needs a neighbourhood, it needs partners, it needs uses. The hotel is, it would be a good steward for the armory. We would connect it, we've been working with the local heritage groups about how to treat it with the most amount of respect. We would connect it on the second and third level on that elevation where there are no architecturally distinctive features, and go from there. We have an urban grocery planned for the lowest level. You all know the story about the food desert we have in downtown. We believe we can solve that problem here. We think that we're going to be building this area up quickly enough that this would be an attractive component. A very flexible theatre space that would serve as a music club in the evening, but would also be space available for the Convention Center Hotel during the daytime. That would happen on the second level. And then on the upper level, this is a tremendously interesting space. It's a free-spanning trusses, very, very similar to the Main Street Station, but a much smaller scale than that. So we could do a banquet for about 1,000 people. This is an ideal ballroom size for the Convention Center Hotel. It would be a great component to go along with the Convention Center businesses. A little bit on the arena specifically. We decided to approach this not as a freestanding building, much the way arenas of the past used to be built, but recent developments have helped us understand that we don't have enough program at the base of an arena to make it interesting all the way around. So we've brought in support from office and retail users and residential users, so our arena has street-level support for all kinds of activity. Unlike the Convention Center, as you walk along, there's really nothing going on there. In our arena, we would have things happening on 5th, on Clay and on 7th. This is an exploration we're working on now with a technology company who would be a significant underwriter for the idea, but a digital art program that they would underwrite as part of the project. We would then tap into local art talent, VCU and others, to create an ongoing digital art program. So something different would always be happening on the plaza. When I say plaza, what I'm talking about is a flexible element of Clay Street that might be able to be closed from time to time, you know, depending on events. So we did this just as a simple exercise to explain how that might work. Shot down Clay Street, and then now a view down 6th Street. So some before and after street sections. This was, this is the before, this is the Colosseum on the left. And across 7th Street, you see the parking deck. This is with the residential wraps. They actually form a better street, a better dimension, better walkability. This is the same view looking on, the Colosseum now on the right, looking down Clay Street West, and you see the armory on the left. And now the hotel and reconfigured Clay Street, it's now open. And at the courthouse, John Marshall courthouse on the right, is a parking lot. This would be our bus transit system and developments on top of that. And finally, the federal government building across from residential. And then 6th Street across from the armory. In all cases though, we're adhering to very, very strict principles about walkability, keeping the ground plain transparent, keeping businesses open behind glass and letting people sort of see what's going on. This is our current retail plan that we're working to. The things that you see in blue represent lobbies to office uses. The things you see, small areas of yellow, those represent lobbies into our residential units. And everything in orange represents retail of some sort, either service retail or restaurants, cafes or pharmacies, markets. And then our open space plan, we worked with city staff on this for a number of months last, end of last year, and have collaborated on this plan. So working also with VCU, who are active in recreating a nice park at the, right next to the Valentine, Maguire Park. It forms a terminus for us on Clay Street, but we have a variety of different kinds of civic spaces, linear parks, all the way to some plaza spaces. Rooftop agriculture, this is, from the very outset, has been a very serious effort on our part. We have been working with a group out of Chicago who actually farm the top of 12 rooftops within the Loop in Chicago, and it's a business they call Roof Crop. We know that there's interest here in Richmond, and we are in the process of exploring exactly the local management and operation of this kind of a process. But we insist that this get built, along with photovoltaics. We want Navy Hill to be an emblematic leader in sustainability ideas. We also want to use the rooftops, obviously, for social purposes. So that's our PPP, power, plants and people. Public art strategies, you saw a little of that. This was an early analysis that we did, but the idea was to find an opportunity for something, something destination attractive about the development, and we think we have that with the arena. But along the way, there would be all kinds of discreet opportunities for public art, and we're very excited. Richmond has got such a strong sensibility about that. I think we started exploring this at the time you were doing your big public art master plan, so we engaged with those people a little bit. We have in our agreement the notion of a signage district. This is, this is meant to be subtle, and it's also meant to be art-based, but we believe that we can help underwrite the arena to some small degree by integrating some master plan of marketing partnerships. of marketing partnerships, and you'll see this in the submission materials. So this will be something you'll have an interest to discuss. I'm now going to turn this to Jennifer, who's going to talk about the ordinances. Oh, there you are.
Ms. Mullin, how are you?
Hi, Mr. Poole, members of the Planning Commission. I'm Jennifer Mullin. With Roth Jackson, with me today are Mark Baker, as well as Mark Cronin, my partner, and John O'Neill with Huntington Andrews Kirk, here on behalf of the Navy Hill District Corporation. We'll walk you through the ordinances specifically. You've had a good overview of the documents, both by Ms. Ebert, Mr. Sledge, as well as Mr. Hallmark. The full set of ordinances are in this binder here. The Planning Commission will be reviewing the ordinances that are in this binder here. So I'm going to walk you through those. I know you do have a list before you. There are a couple of additional pieces of information that Mr. Evenger has provided to you, including the master plan, which is an exhibit to the development agreement. Again, the development agreement is not one of the ordinances that the Planning Commission will make a recommendation to City Council on, but it's important for you to be able to flip back and forth between that, as well as the right-of-way conditions. So you'll see a multi-colored plan also in your packages, and I'll walk you through each of those. I'm going to start, I'm going to go in numerical order, and I'll start with the two ordinances, 2019-213 and 214. And these are the ordinances to authorize the conveyance of certain portions of the properties described, one to the Economic Development Authority, and the remainder of the parcels under the purchase and sale agreement to the developer entity. So just again, want to reorient you. These are the existing conditions of which you are, I'm sure, extremely familiar with, which is good because the pointer does not work. So the spaceship on the top left is the existing Coliseum to orient you. On the left of that is the Convention Center. That is Fifth Street. On the right of the Coliseum is Seventh Street. You have an existing parking deck, which will remain a city asset, a city parking lot. You have the Department of Public Safety Building, and then that is Tenth Street on the far right-hand side. The triangular-shaped building to the south of that is the Department of Social Services. Then you have the courthouse, which does not get touched. The IRS does not get touched. And the next to the left is the Blues Armory, as well as the parking deck to the left of that. That also remains a city asset. So again, A is the Coliseum. B is the existing parking deck. C is that parking lot. D is the Department of Public Safety. I is Department of Social Services. F is the Blues Armory. And there are multiple parcels in here, which you'll see, and I'll talk about in a moment. And E is the other parking deck. Clay Street runs through the middle. As Mr. Hallmark mentioned, it is only open for one street. You have Marshall to the south and Lee Street to the north. So one of the key pieces that I'm going to talk about in these conveyance ordinances is what these parcels are. So parcel A is actually multiple parcels, and it extends all around, and you can see in those blue lines that are wavy, and they dip down, and there's slivers here and there. Those are multiple parcels that we will be consolidating, adjusting, creating right-of-way parcels, and then creating new parcels. So the big parcel in the middle becomes parcel A1. Go back to that. And I'll show you a highlighted version, but you'll be able to see this up close. It becomes parcel A1. The two parcels on either side in red, those will become private development parcels, with some closures of right-of-way, some reconfiguration, which you'll see. The parcel to the right is the wrapping of the parking garage. That becomes a new parcel. Parcel C is multiple parcels that become one. Same with parcel D, and you'll have right-of-way in between that and I. Parcel F is, again, multiple parcels. The Blues Armory will remain a city-owned asset. That is under a lease agreement as well with the EDA. Again, not within the Planning Commission purview, but be happy to talk about it. In between the gray area, that becomes the new Sixth Street, and then around the other parking deck becomes parcel F. So you'll see, together with the right-of-way ordinance, which I'll go through, there are certain right-of-way components that are being closed in order to create these development parcels in addition to creating better rights-of-way. So I'll get into that detail a little bit more, but this slide just gives you the sense of what those closures are in order to create the parcels together with the better right-of-way. The blue areas become the dedication. So the, on either side of A, that is the bulbout on either side of the arena currently, that is closed and dedicated back as right-of-way. The blue in between A, E, and F, that is Clay Street, and as is the blue between D and I, the hatched blue becomes the new Sixth Street, which will be a pedestrian street. So this is an expanded CM district, which also, we'll get into the highlights. This is sort of hard to see, so let me get a little bit closer. So Block A1, so this is ordinance 2019-213, which would authorize the conveyance of parcel A1 to the Economic Development Authority. And that would then allow the Economic Development Authority to then lease that parcel to the NH District Corporation pursuant to the terms of the lease, which again, is outside of the Planning Commission purview, but that parcel needs to be created and transferred in order for that to occur. While that is happening, you can see the two corners up at the top in red, hatched, that is right-of-way. Lee Street, as you all know, as you drive down it, has any number of interesting features to it, one of which is it is not straight. So this is straightening it out. We're creating these parcels here on the corner that will be added to A2 and A3. Again, these boundary lines get consolidated and adjusted, as well as creating the right-of-way that is F2 at the bottom. A1, again, so that is, that's the arena piece, and Mr. Hallmark went into detail, and I'll just flip through just to remind you as we go through this. You've got your ground plane here, so again, having that activation, and I'll talk more about it, but Ms. Ebert really hit on the key piece. This is development that is specifically in line with both the downtown plan as well as the Pulse Corridor Plan. And for that, we're going to have specific components, not only in the text of the document, but you can see it. So we're talking about activating the ground level plane. You're having the transparency, the holding the corners, all of those pieces that you all spent any number of hours discussing and encouraging through the Pulse Corridor Plan. This turns into the arena and the office and the residential, again, all in accordance with the master plan that you have before you, which is an exhibit to the development agreement itself. And as we go through these, and this is the current, again, just proposed, on B, this is, again, the red is the right-of-way. That gets closed, so these parcels don't exist currently. B, right now, is the parking deck extending out to the right-of-way. We're going to square that off. The red on the bottom is actually where Clay Street is now, which you can see better on your priority street exhibit that I believe you also have before you, that just shows the multi-levels of Clay Street. So even if you were to open it today, it is not one that you would drive straight through. So this closes that off, creates the parcel that then becomes the ground-level commercial as discussed. The parking garage remains a city asset. It is currently underutilized, so this will have multifamily residential use on the top of the existing, or on top of the ground-floor commercial. This just shows you a view of that. And that wraps that parking garage with those uses to, again, activate the corners, activate the street, and create that synergy with the mix of uses. Block C, again, you have that right-of-way being closed at the north on Lee Street. This turns into the GRTC Transit Center. Again, the same concept of holding the corner, creating the transparency on the ground plane, and creating that synergy with the mix of uses. Please note, which I'll come back to when we talk about the priority streets and the commercial-oriented streets, the Clay Street frontage here. So this is the GRTC Transit Center, but you will see that you do not have a driveway on Clay Street. That is a pedestrian walkway and an emergency access only. So you have your existing parking lot, excuse me, next to the yellow there, that then becomes the transit center, the mixed-use area. And as Michael noted, on the open space, the notch that is not a building on the second level is public open space as well, so up those stairs. So not only do you have the dignified transit center with your bus locations in close proximity to each other, behind the gentleman sitting down there is the conditioned space that you can have concessions or restrooms, have a snack and wait for the bus. You can go upstairs as well and just sit and be as part of the open space. Block D, the same occurs. And all of these, I will note, again, are subject to conditions precedent that are in the development agreement. So there are 21 conditions precedent prior to bond close, and there are additional conditions precedent that are for each specific block, such as the development program that I'm walking through, as well as on Block D, the public safety building obviously has to come down. That is a private development cost. That turns into a, again, ground-level retail, and above it with office. E and F, I'll actually take all together. So this is currently the, get to current picture just to remind you here. So we have the Crystal Palace, which is currently on Sixth Street, and we're going to turn that into an enlivened space. This is the shot that I was looking for. So on Sixth Street, so you have, Sixth Street that used to exist, the Crystal Palace was constructed over top, you have the parking garage that I was talking about, the remains a city asset to the left, the Blues Armory to the right, and the Coliseum to the north of that. Again, so as part of the development agreement requirements, the Crystal Palace would come down. The Blues Armory is renovated and rehabilitated and preserved for key defining character features, all pursuant to requirements that are set forth in the armory lease itself and required through the development agreement, so that all of those components that are outlined, and we have worked with various groups in order to ensure that those character-defining features are, in fact, included in the text of the document, which they are in addition to the master plan requirements that are set forth in this document, as well as in the text of the agreement itself. Again, so to go from a closed-off space that is hiding one of the gems in the city, in order to open that back up in the center, that becomes the reopened Sixth Street tying into Clay Street to the north. You now have a residential wrap with ground-floor commercial that helps you have that synergy so that you can get the feeling as you come out of the armory or out of the multifamily residential building or one of the shops on E, and you come out and you have to the north, you have the new Convention Hotel, again, which has that standard for quality. It needs to be an upper upscale. Again, that's all required in the development agreement itself. It has to have a room block agreement, the first room block agreement that the city has had. So that helps us re-energize this portion of downtown, helps the Convention Center get those larger conventions, as well as helps the Blues Armory. And with that component, the Blues Armory is all renovated using private dollars. It is connected to the hotels, so you have a hotel that has a really interesting ballroom that is in a historic structure, all maintained privately pursuant to development agreement and lease requirements that are set forth in those documents. And then you come in, and you end up at the plaza area that Mr. Hallmark was describing with the arena, so you have those active uses on both sides, both the residential and the office and the public art program. So you get a real sense of excitement where it doesn't exist today. Again, all in conformance with the downtown plan, which was even furthered by the Pulse Corridor Plan itself. Block I, this is the Department of Social Services. This would require the relocation of the Department of Social Services, which is set forth in the development agreement. Again, all conditions to the purchase and sale agreement and the development agreement requirements prior to the ability to take down any of those private parcels. With each of those parcels, there has to be confirmation that all of the elements of the development agreement are in compliance and have been satisfied prior to the ability to continue to take down each of those parcels so that the city ensures that the development is what is required pursuant to the development agreement. This is the generalized sheet, and there are multiple sheets behind it which blow up the different sections here, but this gives you an overall of ordinance 2019-215. So this is the reconfiguration of the right-of-way. So as you can see, there are multicolors, lots of shading, there's a lot going on here, but what it does is it creates a reconnected street, allowing for redevelopment of these parcels pursuant to those master plan documents that we keep referring back to, all pursuant to those key six components for development that were set forth in the Pulse Corridor Plan, which will become, and I'll discuss in a moment, part of the text amendment for the CM district. So just walking you through Block A, up at the top, that is still an encroachment area for the entrance level into the new arena off of Clay Street. You see in orange, there is a pedestrian access easement along both Blocks A and Block B, so going from Fifth to Seventh Street on the Clay Street side. That is a pedestrian access easement, a minimum of ten feet in width. You have the green sections. Again, those are the right-of-way closures that I described on each of the blocks in order to create those parcels. And again, you can see now here even more clearly the Clay Street actual right-of-way. So if you walk from the left to the, or from the right to the left, you'll see the new Clay Street, so the red double hatch. That is the reopening of Clay Street, which is currently physically blocked by buildings as your hindrance. So once that Block D building comes down, the right-of-way gets constructed. As you walk back towards the arena, you have a new dedication of Clay Street along Block C, which is between Eighth and Ninth. You have a closure of right-of-way of Clay Street between Seventh and Eighth, and you have a new construction and dedication of Clay Street where it does not exist today between Seventh and Fifth Street. Again, all about reconnecting and reopening these streets, as well as the properties for development to create that vitality that is missing in this section of the Central Business District. The blue hatching, that's the new Sixth Street. So again, that area allows you to come in from Marshall Street, and you come into the arena area itself. Sixth Street ties into Clay Street. You'll see that Clay Street there is hatched. That allows for the Sixth Street encroachment, which again, is outlined in the documents. That allows for us to have a stormwater facility under the road, and one of the components of that requirement, again, is through a utility agreement that is outside of the purview of the Planning Commission, but I will note that it does require us to detain more than is required by the code, in addition to allowing us to have some closure features of portions of Clay, if you have the larger events at the arena, so that you can have that plaza area that allows folks to spill out. Again, using all of that in order to create what you see before you from the ground plane itself. This brings me into the rezoning papers, and I'm going to take all three of those together. And so that is to ordinance 2019-217, 218, and 219. 217 is to modify the zoning regulations applicable to the CM district itself. The CM district is the Coliseum Mall district. You all may not know that it exists because it is only in a certain portion of this site that it exists in the city, and I'll show you a map when I come back to this. So the area in pink, so keep that in mind. Everything else around it is zoned B4, which is similar to the rest of downtown. So again, we have a text amendment request that you will hear to modify those regulations. And we have a 2018 includes new designations for priority streets as well as commercial-oriented streets. Again, this is coming out of the Pulse Corridor Plan, where there are existing priority streets and commercial-oriented streets throughout the city, however, not in this area. That is important when you're talking about that pedestrian-oriented development, so to maintain your street wall, to limit the access of driveways, to limit parking in front of buildings and things of that nature. And then the final ordinance, 2019, is for the rezoning. So everything in the pink hatching is B4 for business district that was requested for rezoning to the Coliseum Mall CM district itself. So just to walk you through some of those zoning regulations. So this is the area, again, that is zoned CM, Coliseum Mall. That was a new zoning that was put into effect in 19... That was a new zoning that was put into effect in 1970. Since 1970, five of the 16 principal uses have remained unchanged. The parking has remained unchanged. The design elements don't exist and have remained unchanged. So one of our components is to take that and bring it forward to today. And you have examples of zoning districts that have been amended and adopted recently, such as the TOD1, that again, take certain uses, such as surface parking lots as principal uses. We are going to remove those. Also adding uses, such as dwellings. Adding requirements, such as a plan of development for uses. So currently, under the CM District, there is only a plan of development for a hotel use and a parking deck. So we are, again, modifying these uses in order to bring it forward, to incorporate some of the newer uses, as well as add certain items, such as the text that require the principles of the Pulse Corridor Plan, which are six tenants that are now specifically included into the text of the document itself. One is to hold the corners. Two, entrances facing the street. Three, appropriate setbacks and step backs. Four, transparency to and from the street. Five, facade articulation. Six, screening parking and services. So again, we have an inclusion of residential uses, which is a positive for that mixed-use development to create the liveliness at all the times during the day. It requires screening of parking decks, requires a plan of development for buildings over 30,000 square feet. It requires an open space minimum, prohibits driveways between buildings and streets, prohibits drive aisles on these priority streets, here shown in blue. It requires fenestration at the ground for dwellings and upper floors. And as Michael discussed, the core principles, again, were based on the design principles that rooted the ultimate development of this property, but it also ties directly into the Pulse Corridor Plan, as well as the downtown plan, and all of the components would now be required under that text amendment. The additional component of the text amendment is signage, and Michael did bring that up briefly in the overall discussion, and we can come back and talk more specifically about that. But that would allow, let's see if I can get back to the slide, that would allow for the ground-level tenant signage, but then the additional signage for sponsorship opportunities, an additional signage around the arena area. Again, that's Block A. And that allows for additional signage above the fifth floor, up to 200 square feet, arena signage, up to 500 square feet. But it does limit it to an ultimate additional two square feet per linear foot in the text of the document. So the rezoning... Gets me here. So from this, existing conditions, so this is the existing CM District, and again, we are proposing with the text amendment to expand that, to include those B4-zoned parcels. So the B4 parcels do allow for residential use. They do have similar parking regulations, which is that no parking is required except for hotels, motels, and dwelling uses, and the parking is similar for both B4 as well as CM. That's included in the text amendment that is before you. So for dwellings, it's one to four, which is similar to UB, TOD, as well as the B4 parcels. And for hotels, it's one for every two hotel rooms, and that is also the same as within the B4 District. So with that, again, this is all consistent with the downtown plan, the Pulse Corridor Plan, and the revitalization that we think is necessary for downtown. And it all, again, requires compliance with the conditions and components that are set forth in the development agreement. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Do members of the commission have questions for either Ms. Mullen, Mr. Sledge, or Ms. Ebert? Mr. Johannes? Could you pull your mic down a little?
Actually, you need to press the right button.
And I have to press the right button. I have, starting right where we are, kind of here, where we had the plans and we had the priority streets. I'm just curious why there's no priority in front of the actual arena along that street phrase.
Sure.
Between the hotel, apartment, et cetera.
So that is the entrance to the hotel. So from a driveway standpoint, the, and I wish that this worked. So from Seventh Street, as you come in, Clay, the entrance to the hotel is right there on Clay Street itself, so that would not be permitted within the priority street.
And same thing going with the whole F1B area there, and then also the area, what's the street on Sixth Street?
So Sixth Street is a pedestrian easement only, so I don't think that that qualifies for the priority street front designation itself. However, that would be subject to the terms and conditions of that easement, which would not allow for driveways coming on and off.
But basic principles are, that's going to be basically some form of retail mixed-use sort of area there.
That's correct. So let me go back to the... So you can see the Sixth Street in the middle of E and F.
Right.
And the orange represents the commercial areas.
Minor questions, just asking.
Yes.
In terms of, you know, the responsibility of the commission, I think one of the things are, we're not overlooking the financial aspects of it, because that's not what we're voting on. There is a certain aspect, I think, in terms of our responsibility is to think about the success of the project, and part of understanding the success of the project is not only understanding the intensity of use for the project itself, but also the surrounding area and the impact of the surrounding area. Do you happen to, or could we get some basic information on that? And some of the information I'd like to understand is the basic, how much of, what is population and workforce in the immediate adjacent area? And if we're looking at the medical school, MCV campus, I'm also interested in knowing how many additional students there are over and above those who are actually wage earners. And in terms of the radius, I don't know, maybe a quarter of a mile or a half a mile, something that's reasonable within a walking distance. And the thought process is, we're trying to be as energized as possible, and it seems to me that we have a fair amount of energy in the area with the population base and the workforce base, and I'm just trying to get an understanding of how much are we, I assume we're basically sort of doubling that, but I'm just curious to see how intense this area is and what the potential is. Obviously, the more dense it is, I think, the greater the success factor is, or the easier the success factor. I'm interested in knowing how active the Convention Center is and what the level of use is, and if we put in a 500-room hotel, do we think, I assume we assume that will boost our ability to get bigger, larger conventions, and I'm curious to know if there's, if you have any data on how or where that's going. As in a previous discussion, you mentioned that the arena will probably be open for about, I think somebody mentioned, 180 days a year as a very conservative estimate, and that's ranging between 3,000 and 17,000, or 17,500 people going into it. And it would be interesting just to know the relationship between the activity there versus the relationship, the activity in the Convention Center, and how much more activated the place is. I'm also curious to know how many acres there are compared to the presentation today and the acreage of the other sites that we saw, just out of curiosity, to see how small we are. I don't know, we don't seem that huge, but just out of interest.
And then just to clarify, the acreage compared to the other cities you saw?
Right.
Yes, okay.
Just to have a relative scale.
Uh huh, sure.
I'm also, are we using multiple architects on all the buildings? Are these independent developments? And I'm just curious to understand that, more or less in the perception of knowing how different their styles might be or what the difference might be. I think those are the list of my questions. And I might come back with a few other items. Of course, you know, one of my primary concerns, which I've mentioned before, is going to be all the public spaces and what they're like and how they interact. I'm concerned a little bit, and I'd like to see if there are any more ideas about creating a spine in terms of the connectivity to the Sixth Street Mall and how we approach that cross point going to the south side of Broad Street. And I know we have some more development in our plans, showing more development down there. And it'd be nice for, and maybe this is something for the future, but just to be thinking about that connectivity and what draws people from the south side of Broad to the north side of Broad, other than just getting to the arena or to the event. And I think that covers my initial part. Oh, also, I'm interested in knowing what type of development there is going on in the area. In terms of VCU, we have, of course, the Children's Hospital, which is $350 million and 16 stories, and then we have the Inpatient Hospital, which is $350 million and 16 stories. We also have the State Building across the street, and I'd like to know if there's any other major development going on in the area. Once again, just to have an understanding of what's happening downtown. That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Johannes raises a number of questions, which leads me to a timing question, and that is, do you have a perception of how long you would need to provide him that information? I'm focused on our October 16 placeholder date with respect to the consideration of these six ordinances.
Sure. I believe that we can get the information that Mr. Johannes has requested by next week, so we could get you written responses to that, or I can come back to your next Planning Commission meeting and provide those answers to you.
I would hope that you'd be able to give the responses in writing to all the commissioners.
Oh, yes, that's what I meant. I can either send it through Mr. Evinger, or I can come back and on the next Planning Commission and present those. We could do it both ways.
Up to the commission, but it would be my perception that we should see it in writing and then make a decision at our next Planning Commission meeting whether we need a further presentation or explanation.
Perfect.
He also raises an interesting, and you've raised, and quite frankly, all three of you raised, and that is that the Planning Commission only considers the six ordinances, and yet this project encompasses a great deal more. And you've made reference in your presentation, Mr. Sledge's presentation, Mr. Hallmark's presentation, that they interrelate. How much more information are we going to be able to have on the other papers before we make a, before the commission considers these six ordinances because of the interrelationship?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Poole, for that question. I think that from a generalized standpoint, we wanted to make sure that you were aware of some of the larger development agreement requirements, so that you can make your decisions and your recommendations based on the ordinances that are before you. Again, through the questions, if there are certain components of the development agreement that you have heard, that you are unclear on, or you would like additional information, we are happy to give you a full presentation on each of those components. We're happy to come back to the next Planning Commission, have another work session on specific items related to that, just to make sure that you feel comfortable related to those six ordinances that are distinct pieces that the Planning Commission would make a recommendation to the City Council on.
I would anticipate that when we do have our public hearing on these six ordinances, that there may be multiple questions from the public with respect to these six ordinances and perhaps the other ordinances that are involved in this.
Sure.
That the commission is not considering. How do you perceive being able to answer the public's questions at our public hearing on the items that are not being considered by the commission?
Sure, absolutely. So I believe at the City Council meeting last night, they announced additional work sessions related to the overall ordinance package itself, which would be public, open to the public, much like this work session that we're having today, which will go in-depth in all of those ordinances. And again, we are happy to have a specific work session related to ordinances unrelated to those that are to be heard by the Planning Commission, which obviously have the overarching components of the project. And we can answer the questions and identify which pieces are part of the development agreement or the cooperation agreement of the ordinances that are not to be recommended by the Planning Commission, but obviously play an important role in the overall development as we get to the specific pieces that the Planning Commission will hear at that public hearing.
As it relates to the economic considerations, clearly the commission is not a part of that, but it is a major component of the overall project. How do you see informing the commission with respect to the economic aspects of this as part of its consideration of these six ordinances?
So I would say, as an overarching matter from the commission's standpoint, the, and Mr. Hallmark identified it in one of the initial slides, there is the arena developed, the arena, which is Block A1, and that is subject to the ordinance 2019-213 for transfer to the EDA pursuant to that arena lease. That is the only component that is funded by that non-recourse bond, which again is the non-moral and no general obligation of the city. We can go into a huge amount of detail related to that. Obviously, we understand that it's a, it is a complicated financial structure from what, obviously, the Planning Commission doesn't hear the financial components, but just from an overall deal structure, because it does have incremental revenues that are driven by the increment financing area that have different components outside of the project blocks versus within. So again, I would suggest that if you would like to have a separate work session on ordinances that are outside of those that the Planning Commission would be making a recommendation on, we are certainly happy to come back and do that in a full detailed presentation, and we can walk through just exactly how those incremental revenues, if they exist, if they are allocated by City Council, are then transferred to the Economic Development Authority to only repay that bond debt, and then having the excess go one half to repay the debt faster and one half to the surplus, and we can get into all the details related to that, with the key component being that there is no moral or general obligation of the city. As Mr. Sledge said, that means that the city is not required to write a check in the event that those incremental revenues do not exist.
214, which declares surplus and then transfer, does have economic consequences for the city because it's city property, and ultimately, the city is receiving dollars, assuming that these ordinances are passed. What's the interrelationship between the economic analysis and 214?
Sure. So 214, that is a negotiated price. As you know, doing development deals, and as if you read through the development agreement itself, again, understanding that's outside of the Planning Commission's purview, but there are very particular requirements. As I walk through in the master plan with respect to each of those pieces, there are additional requirements above and beyond that, including affordable housing, including minority business participation, including job training, including key features of the development itself, including the room block agreement that I referenced with respect to the Convention Hotel. So lots of features that are involved, as well as the public infrastructure. That's correct. And defeasance of the existing debt rolling into the bond offering itself. And so all those pieces play into that valuation for those particular parcels, again, with the purchase price paid upfront. So the city holds the funds, and you have to adhere to not only the preconditions of the bond closing, those 21 items that I mentioned, happy to walk through those, in addition to the preconditions for each of the parcels being taken down. So again, I would think that a separate work session, as soon as you all will have us back and we can talk through the overall financing structure and how that all interrelates, I think that would be very important for the Planning Commission, as well as the public, just to have another... just to have another opportunity to hear how these ordinances do tie together, understanding that the planning commission does have very specific purview over the six ordinances and particularly in relationship to its compliance with the downtown plan, as well as the Pulse Corridor plan.
Thank you. And I have a couple of more questions. When we talked, when Mr. Sledge made his first presentation with respect to the fact that there is no moral or legal obligation of the city with respect to the finances, and I know that's really not in our purview, but he made a statement that the shortfall goes to the investors. Can you, either you or Mr. Sledge, address whether you mean that the investors lose those dollars, or do they replace those dollars?
That is correct, and I'd be happy to answer that. And John O'Neill with Huntington Andrews-Curth is welcome to come up and push me aside and give a more detailed explanation to it. So if the incremental revenues do not exist, so the incremental revenues that I referenced, that is the only thing that the bond investors have in order to repay the bond debt. So there is no title to the underlying dirt. They cannot come back in, such as if you had a mortgage on your house and the bank can come and foreclose. They do not have that opportunity. So the only thing that exists is those incremental revenues, if they exist, if city council allocates them. If they do not exist, that loss is on them. So there is no risk to the city. There is no requirement to write a check in order to make that up. That is the bond investors' risk. These are sophisticated investors. So when we talk about the investment, those bond investors and the city are actually very closely aligned because they are going to be very interested in making sure that the development occurs in a timely manner, which is another component that I believe Mr. Hallmark talked about, is one of these preconditions that are outlined in the document, is that prior to the bond closing, so prior to that happening, that the developer has to show both debt and equity that is available in order to make the developments on either side of A, on E, F, and C come up contemporaneously with that construction so that you do have that critical mass of the development. Again, because the only thing that they have is those incremental revenues, if they exist, if they are allocated, nothing more.
Do you perceive a timeline for that?
Yes, sir. There is a schedule actually also outlined in the development agreement itself. So the schedule is another component, just like the master plan, just like all the other requirements that have to be adhered to. So the A, E, F, and C are all generally in the same timeline, and that is a first sequence. The remaining developments come online after that.
And just in simplistic terms, what you're really saying is if the dollars that are generated from the tax incremental participation in this, if they're not there, then the bondholders don't get paid.
That's correct.
And there's no way the bondholders can come back to City Richmond or its citizens and ask or demand any repayment.
There is no remedial help for them, other than those incremental revenues, if they exist, outlined in the documents.
Now, in, again, in, I believe, Mr. Sledge's presentation, we talked about meals tax increase. It seemed to me that he was implying, were you implying that there's a different meals tax involved in this project than what's already in place for the city?
Chairman Poole, it is the same meals tax. In terms of the incremental revenues, what I was attempting to clarify is that only the new incremental meals tax revenues from within the development, as you see outlined behind you, only those go towards paying the debt service for the bonds. And I was also making the distinction that the 1.5% that has been identified for Richmond City Schools is still going to Richmond City Schools, sir.
So you're at nine and a half percent overall tax. 1.5 goes to city schools. Eight percent goes towards the payment of the bonds?
Seven and a half.
Seven and a half.
Seven and a half. Nobody ever claimed I was good at math.
It's lawyer math. Six percent is the meals tax that is used to repay the bond debt. The 1.5% that is allocated to go to city schools continues to go to city schools.
Okay. But you've made a clear delineation between the two in the paperwork.
That's correct. That is correct. It's outlined, again, in the documents as what is defined as incremental revenues.
And Chairman Poole and other members of the commission, to add additional clarity, if an existing restaurant exists in the incremental financing area within the red boundaries, those meals taxes do not go towards the debt service for this bond.
Very good. Additionally, you made reference to the urban grocery, I believe, in the first floor of the Armory.
Yes, sir.
What square footage do you perceive that? Have you laid that out?
The floor plate is about 20,000 square feet. So I think by the time you get the arcade taking in, it ends up being about 18, 16,000 square feet.
Very good. And you told us that Allentown was about half the size of Richmond. What's the size of Kansas City vis-à-vis Richmond?
You don't do math? I don't do.
I do know that Kansas City has a population that you want to?
I have to step up to say I don't know, but it's, I think it's over a million.
We'll get that exact number for you.
Yeah, that, I recently visited Kansas City, and I thought it was a bit larger, but there, unlike Richmond, where Richmond is city and surrounding counties, Kansas City is all one entity. So you're really looking at the metropolitan areas. They're very similar.
So Chairman Poole, I will get some demographics on all of those examples for you. I think that may be where you were headed with your question. So areas, population, those kinds of things. We can do that in Jennifer's timeline.
Thank you very much. Ms. Robertson.
I think, Ms. Greenhead, my go.
Ms. Greenfield?
I was just going to, I mean, there's a lot of information to absorb here, and I think it's coming evident that we probably could benefit from another work session. I don't know if next Monday or Tuesday, Monday, the 16th, is going to be a quick enough turnaround, but it sounds like you can get a lot of the demographic and market study information to us. But is there any reason that we can't add, you know, to the September 16 agenda? I mean, we're having a Navy Hill development site tour, it looks like. Is there any reason we can't add additional time for a work session?
Absolutely. I think that it's imperative with us doing the due diligence on the six ordinances that we do have. We do have additional information that we're going to want, which is why I was trying to make it clear at our last meeting that October 16 is a placeholder. We may not be ready. We very well could be ready. Depends on the information and the questions that the various commissioners have. We've got Mr. Johannes with some very specific architectural and planning issues that I think that are extremely important, particularly for these six ordinances. So I think we do need at least one and probably maybe more other sessions. I know that this coming Monday, you have a plan for Monday.
The agenda is fairly light currently. There are two items, and so we certainly can dedicate the remainder of the meeting to a second presentation for further discussion, and we can reschedule the tour if we want to focus on more discussion at this point.
I would suggest that we inquire with Ms. Mullen and Mr. Sledge if you believe you could be ready in that quick timeframe. Otherwise, we can take it to the next meeting.
Absolutely. We'll be ready for you. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, I think we're going to be ready. I don't think, working together, understanding what the questions might be from all of the commissioners, but I'm very confident that we will be ready to begin, whether it's the 16, you add more time to the commissioners' agenda, or if you want to do a special or additional meetings. But my team, working with the Navy Hill developers, we will be ready to respond.
I'm sure Mr. Sledge is hearing you very clearly on that, since you're his boss, but I want to make sure that Ms. Mullen and Mr. Hallmark would be ready by next Monday as well.
Yes, sir.
Now, Ms. Robertson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I want to thank the staff and the development team for the presentation. There's a lot of information, and sorry we weren't able to get it to this degree when we had our council meeting presentation, because we hadn't quite got where we needed to be with the technology. But the visuals do help a lot. I just want to emphasize the magnitude of this development and the many moving parts, and how they all interconnect, and the significance of the commission, the planning commission, and the job that we are challenged with as it relates to these ordinances, which are significant and extremely important to the development, as it relates to the consolidation of these lots to make this land available so that if this project is to move forward, whether council approves or disapprove this, without the consolidation and the ordinances that are before the planning commission, these are almost fundamental, basic requirements that has to be provided and needs to be acted upon by the planning commission so that the groundwork basically is done. And so I think it's extremely important that as we, Mr. Chair, look at all of the components of this development, that we use our time as wise as we can to look at the consolidation of, and the transfer and the rezoning of this, of the groundwork that has got to be done, irrespective of what council ultimately decide to do as it relates to the financing, the mix of retail, the mix of housing, the structure of the financing, all of those elements that council will have to ultimately make a decision as it relates to the total development of this project. Getting this land decision made is fundamental to us just having the groundwork done to move forward. And so I really would like to just emphasize the significance of these decisions as it relates to the land use, and raise the question as it relates to the changes that are being made in the land use, as to the impact that it's going to have on downtown Richmond. We under, I understand why this development, why the land recommendations are, land use recommendation, and the consolidation of lots is necessary to support the vertical development that you plan to put on this land. But one of the things that I think in the process of reviewing this that we want to make sure of, that we are, as we take certain uses out, like the surface parking lots, one of the concerns that have been brought to my attention is what's going to happen for the John Marshall Courts Building? Because the parking lot that we are looking at for the Transportation Greater Richmond Transit Center is really taking up the parking lot that is not restricted to the Courts Building, but we know that a significant volume of traffic that are going in and out of the courts every day is using that space. And so I think the question of volume of circulation, how much additional traffic you're going to have in the areas, and those kinds of things are significant as it relates to how we ultimately make a recommendation of changes of land use and not be sure that we are, that we are making those adjustments that are necessary to accommodate the increased volume of traffic, pedestrian as well as vehicle and other sources of traffic, when we take out these surface parking lots that are currently providing a means of parking. And I'm not sure that I've seen, I know that there are other parking garages, and that you're doing a beautiful job at making them not parking garages now, that we are really taking good use of the wrap around them, which is extremely important and attractive. But the availability of those lots, open to the general public and those kinds of things, would be, would be good to be able to have an assessment of loss of street parking as well as other types of surface parking. And, Mr. Chair, I guess the other thing that I'm, I understand the volume of the interest and concern about the overall, the total development, and how much information we need to be able to make sure that we have received and reviewed in order for us to address these ordinances. But I want to, I guess, question as it relates to the placeholder that we have for October 16, and the reason why that placeholder is at that period of time, and how significant that is into the overall plan. So I did have this conversation with city council, like I said that I would. So city council has agreed that we would meet every Monday, maybe with the exception of one Monday, which that will be debated as well. We will, we will dedicate three to four hours every Monday from now till November to get through this development process. And so to get through that, as I've mentioned to the administration, there needs to be a sequence of time factors that we factor into that timeline so that the decisions at each level that we are receiving as it relates to this, that we are reviewing this components, and that we are, in a sequential manner, trying to determine certain things so that we are making progress to completing the review. And so I think it's important that we go back and visit the October 16 deadline and get feedback as to the sequential order, and if there are some other placeholder dates that I think we need to put in the whole development process, so that we know that we're getting through those processes in order to move this development forward.
I think that's a wise suggestion. We probably should address that again on Monday at our planning commission meeting and see where we are and where, if you could, between you and Mr. Sledge, put together, and Mr. Hallmark as well, put together a thought process of how we sequentially deal with that question, because I think Ms. Robertson's exactly correct. Mr. Murthy?
Yes. Thank you again for your time and the amount of detail and information you've provided today. As everyone stated, it's probably generated a lot of questions, and I'd like to add on to the additional questions that have been asked already. As Ms. Robertson had kind of pointed out to, talking about traffic circulation and the amount of density, as we're adding more homes, we're adding more businesses. My last time at the Coliseum was the CIL, CIA double A tournament, and my car was rear-ended because traffic circulation was so bad. So thinking about how Richmond has changed since that time, because that was a long time ago. And I would like to see kind of a little more specifically, thinking about max times of the Coliseum, what would be max capacity Coliseum, and what that circulation would look like, using all modes of transportation, whether it be cars, public transportation, walking and biking, because this is going to be a regional facility, so you're going to have people coming from all over. And what would that look like on ingress and egress of the facility at this peak time, at different times of the day when we think we'd have events? Kind of going to that point with it being a regional facility, thinking about what else is, what else is happening, and this is more general, but what else is happening in the area, as we are not just Kansas City, we are Richmond, Chesapeake, and Henraco, and what other projects in those areas could potentially impact that circulation or demand? I know that's a little bit more on the economics of it, but I think it does have some impact in scale.
Just a point of clarity, sir. In terms of the, what's happening within the region, is your question as it relates to the transportation?
No. As far as projects. Projects. I know Henraco is looking at a sports arena. We know that Chesapeake is looking to build something, build a convention, a smaller convention center south on the Golden Turnpike. So just kind of thinking of those larger projects, just for, to look at it in general.
Yes, sir. And what I would say is that this master plan development, I think it's unique in that it is at our city center. It is a unique part of our downtown area, provides us with redevelopment opportunities. And while there may be other venues planned and being discussed in the counties that surround us, I think if we look at Block A, in the counties that surround us, I think with, if we look at Block A with the arena, it would be an absolutely unique venue in the region. But really home in the city of Richmond. And so we see this as a net addition in terms of us being able to attract dollars to the city.
Don't disagree. Just, I guess my question would be, have the conversations occurred regionally in this discussion, related to this project, and making sure that the focus is for what this use is designed for, specific to Richmond, instead of the counties aren't, or even other areas are not duplicating efforts?
Understood, sir.
Yeah. So I'd like confirmation that that's actually occurred, if that's possible.
And the city issued the RFP, and so we have approached this as a, as a city of Richmond project. When the RFP went out, it did not go out with, with regional collaboration in mind in the sense of, of the locality surrounding us participating in any of the costs or any other process. And so that, we, I'm more than glad to follow up on your question and provide an answer, but that is at the heart and essence of it.
I'm sure. Yep. Okay. And then really appreciate Mr. Hallmark's examples, because I think that helps provide us an understanding of what could happen here. One nice aspect of that is, a lot of those actually are now at their 30, close, getting close to the 30-year mark, and if we exclude Los Angeles, because LA is just its own beast, and I would not compare Richmond to LA, ever. But if we look at Columbus, Kansas City, and Allentown, and some of the things that we talked about, and I think in your presentation, you had 500 million towards schools, can we look back and see how much tax revenue was generated that was given to schools, how many jobs are created, and as well as some impact to housing, if possible, when we look at the other projects?
From the other projects, sir.
Yeah. And then my last one would be, again, going back to looking at the other projects, thinking about what are their design guidelines or proffers associated with the overall detail of design in the neighborhood? I think I saw some of the chains that didn't actually have their traditional chain signage, so it looked like that may have been something more specific to it, so you have a cohesive development, especially if you have all this connectivity amongst Lee and Clay and Marshall. So appreciate some thought or consideration to a level of the design guideline or pattern book.
Mr. Tep, you can.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentations. I definitely look forward to having those show up in my inbox, so I can look at them in more detail. It was a lot of information to take in all at once. I have a very specific question. I believe in one of Mr. Hallmark's slides, the surface lot on Broad Street between Sixth and Seventh was shown as in play, but it hasn't shown up in anything else, and I was wondering if that could be explained.
Can you put your mic a little closer, please?
Yeah, sorry about that.
Jimmy, too.
Did you hear my, everybody?
Broad and, Broad and Seventh?
Yeah. The surface lot between Broad, or on Broad, between Sixth and Seventh showed up in one of Mr. Hallmark's slides, I believe, but I haven't seen it show up anywhere else.
Yeah, okay, I've got that one. Thank you. The only surface lot that, I think that was a mistake shown on his, that is not included in this, so N is the only surface lot on Broad Street. And I think that I omitted the discussion of that in my presentation. Again, that is in your, the master plan that you have before you, and so that is a surface lot that again becomes ground-level retail or commercial space with multifamily above it, Block U also.
Buildings that were being demolished and turned into parking lots, so that was one of those cyan-colored slides. So it wasn't that it was in play, it was just that it was not producing anything. So it was being taken, in other words, it was being taken out of play and turned into a parking lot.
Okay. So I guess to follow up on that, why would that lot not be in play, considering we've got a very similar lot a block away that is planning to be developed?
Again, go ahead.
It's not city-owned, right?
Yeah, it's not city-owned.
That, that lot is not city-owned, so that is not within this development.
So, okay, so the one between Fourth and Fifth?
Could be available, but is not part of this development agreement.
Okay, so Block N is currently city-owned?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. There were a number of slides that showed sort of goals of the overall project, which those were the, that's the first time I've seen stated goals of the project. It was good to see those. Is reducing vehicle miles traveled a goal stated or unstated of this project?
Reducing vehicle miles, is that?
Vehicle miles traveled, yes.
Yes, so that's, that's all part of, and Michael can probably do this more eloquently than I could, but part of the, the mixed-use development component, again, getting back to those tenements, is to encourage your pedestrian-oriented development, where you have a place to live, work, learn, and play, all within the same space, together with the GRTC Transit Center that is included in that, which is the multimodal component of the overall project. So this is designed to be that, that next phase of development within Richmond to, to help achieve the goal of getting us to the next level.
On the subject of the Transit Center, that's, that's a particular issue that I can't help but kind of hone in on, because of the distance that it lies between existing pulse stations. It's basically two blocks north of Broad and two blocks east or west from existing pulse stations. And in order to make transit an actual, very appealing way of getting around, and to take that seriously as a form of transportation in the city, transfers need to be seamless. People, you know, ideally wouldn't walk four to five blocks in order to get from one bus line to another bus line, and the pulse line is one of our most heavily, it's the most heavily traveled route in the city. So I've been told that the, that the lot, the N block is too small for GRTC to have a transfer center there. What is the required square footage for a, for a transfer center, according to GRTC?
So the RFP outlined a 65,000-square-foot space for the, for the transfer center. When we met with GRTC, we identified options, and was one of those options, being on Broad Street, and that was just the, I think it was maybe a combination, should defer to GRTC, I will not speak for them, but I think based on the size of that lot, it's not just the square footage, but the access component. So the reason that it is ingrained within this development where it is, obviously we don't have frontage on Broad Street except for N, so using the, the GRTC routes and creating an expectation for additional BRT lines, I think this would tie in very well with that, in addition to having all of the components for not only dignity within your transit center operations, which we certainly do not have now, that close proximity of using the, the interior space, as well as the, the public park component, and having, again, the, the mixed-use on top of it, that is the, the ultimate goal for us in trying to integrate the transit center within the development while maintaining that pedestrian-ordered street wall on both sides of the development, and maintaining Clay Street as our, as our priority street frontage.
I certainly agree that dignity is a really important part of a, of a transfer center, but if you have to walk four blocks in the rain to get from one bus line to another, I mean, you may as well have the transfer center outside.
So, we agree. So the GRTC station for us was, was requested by the administration to locate it somewhere within the vicinity and/or within our development. So we worked for several months to look at alternative sites, including N, including the area along Marshall in front of the convention center. It's a significant area there without storefrontage. All of those, all of those analyses are available to you, if you, if you would like to see them.
Yeah, I would, I would love to, yeah.
Yeah, and so, so the one, the problem with N, of course, was the number of births that we could get there, it was more like eight, rather than, rather than the 12 necessary, very tight churning radiuses and those kinds of things. Our resistance initially to see was that we saw Clay Street as a very important pedestrian spine, and the idea of these marauding buses, you know, coming across a pedestrian walkway was, was disconcerting. We came up with some ideas with GRTC that, that solved that problem for, for both of us. So, so we're very open to that notion. It's just that we, we've settled into this particular site with, with GRTC, so happily endorsing that.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Greiffield, do you have questions? Ms. Coffee Glenn, I'm just go come down, I'm coming to Mr. Thompson. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you. Relating to the repayment of the nonrecourse bond, I know you guys touched on that earlier, but just curious, with, with the surpluses that we hope are available, is, does the entire debt of the bond have to be repaid before the surplus, any surpluses are distributed, or is there an annual distribution, assuming each year there are surpluses available?
There is an annual distribution, so once the required annual payment is made, any surplus revenues above and beyond that, 50% go towards the, the payment on the, on the bond debt to accelerate the payoff, and then the other, the other 50% goes towards that 50% towards schools, 34% towards core services, the funds towards housing and homeless, and then the arts, history, and culture. So the surplus revenues get split 50/50.
Okay. And assuming the surplus figures are accurate, the forecast, how long do you anticipate before the full bond debt is repaid?
According to our financial advisors, Davenport, 21 years.
21 years, okay.
And that, that is assuming the accelerated debt, which is what we expect to have happen, and so that helps reduce the, the interest payment, as Mr. Sledge indicated.
Okay. Thank you. When it comes to the affordable housing units, the, if I remember correctly, low-income housing tax credits are not being used, is that correct?
That is correct.
What oversight is going to be on the part of the developers or the property owners to make sure those affordable, or those income limits are maintained?
Sure. That's a great question, and I'll add that to the list of documents that you all have. That's another exhibit to the development agreement, which is an affordable housing covenant. So it acts as a, as a property restriction that runs with the land, that identifies, and it gets recorded against each block, which identifies specific minimums and maximums, so that you are not putting all the affordable housing of one type on one block, and you're not, you're not loading it in one way or the other. It also requires certain criteria for reporting, which is all taken from the VHDA standard form, incorporating that for reporting requirements as well as compliance, and how you handle the, the units on an ongoing basis.
Okay. Thank you. For, in an effort to, it seems like this is such a great opportunity for the city to help deconcentrate some of its lowest-income housing communities, what is being done to help provide that or incentivize developers to help accomplish that goal of the city?
So from an overall standpoint, the, the overall development itself is part of the development agreement, if we are able to, to have city council approval for the project and are able to move forward with the project, as we move through the development of the private development parcels and take down those lots, each of those lots require to have certain affordable housing units throughout the overall district, as I mentioned, on a, with a minimum and a maximum across the board. It also requires us to raise 10 million in philanthropy, partnering with Better Housing Coalition to provide additional affordable housing units. So again, that you have the, a wider range of affordability of the area median income, and then together with that additional surplus that Mr. Sledge mentioned, from the, the city surpluses out of that 50%, which could then, at city council's discretion, have the pathway to hundreds more, they can use it at any, any capacity that they so choose at that point. So as an overall strategy, given the project's location, you have a wide range of affordability. It is not replacement units for public housing, however, it does provide opportunities for, for jobs, as well as opportunities for affordable housing on a, on a range from 40% all the way to 60 and 80%, which are included in the, in the project blocks themselves.
Okay. And then one last question for Mr. Hallmark. I'm curious, your resume is very impressive with large projects like this, this is, this is what looks to be an incredible opportunity for the city. What do you foresee is the two biggest challenges that this project could hold for the city and for yourselves as the developers?
I think public education at the moment. There's a lot of myths going on about the project, which are, which we're working hard to, to knock down. You know, I, I think, I think that's basically it, that human beings are involved in execution of projects like this all the way through, so just making sure that we, I should say, I think we've, we've started with an excellent team of, of professionals. We have, I think, maybe some of the strongest civic leadership of any project I've worked on. So I, I've worked on, in many capital cities, we have not, I have not yet had this many corporate and civic leaders of the kind of caliber that you have here in Richmond, who are willing to, to volunteer their time to make a project like this happen. So, so far that's it. I think the challenges are, are public education, and moving through the process.
Maybe I'll rephrase my question a bit. Assuming all the votes are there and the project moves forward, what, at that point, what do you anticipate is your biggest challenge, just with the physical aspects of this project, given the scale?
Well, we have buildings in close proximity, so we, we have, somebody asked, I think, Commissioner Johannes, I think you asked a question about multiple architects. So yes, we do, for the very reasons I think you brought up, we want different voices in the project, the same with the contractors, the same with our NVE community participation. So we have a large number of people involved in a tight area, so that would, that's one challenge, is site management and scheduling. So far, we've, we've managed to have several wider group conversations about how that might work. You know, I, I just hesitate to, those are normal kinds of design and construction problems to solve, so I'm, I'm struggling to find one that's completely unique. I, I'll throw out another benefit, not to get away from your question, but we don't have the kind of neighborhood impacts, given where we are. We're, we're sort of on one end of the convention center itself, but, but not, not in the middle of Jackson Ward, where, where we've got biotech on another side, which doesn't have a residential community, we've got a, got the back end of parking garages on the Marshall Street side, and we've got a very supportive ECU Health Systems Group, so that's a, that's a huge benefit. So a lot of those, and an easy way to get hauled material out of the site. So I think, I think that would be probably the number one challenge, is working on three or four of these blocks next door to one another simultaneously with different contractors.
Okay.
Did you have some in mind? I'm just kind of curious.
No, I was, I was really just curious, what you saw is...
You've made me now start thinking about problems, and I'll come back with something.
Mr. Thompson, if I may, just to, to enhance a little bit about, one of the, one of the points that Mr. Hallmark made, one of the points we'd like to make sure to convey is that there is a very robust public outreach, meetings in districts, meetings with individuals, meetings with, with groups, all to help educate about this project, and the transformational effect that it will have in the city of Richmond, and to also point people to what's actually in the documents. So just wanted to share that as well.
Ms. Greiffield?
I just have a clarifying question, kind of tagging along to the questions by Mr. Thompson. Earlier in the presentation, there was a mention of 280 affordable units, and then another 10 million for 200 units. Is that 10 million contingent upon philanthropic donations? I mean, you mentioned something about philanthropic money, I just want to make sure I have them clear.
Yes, so the development agreement requires, there's, they're two separate, we call them two separate tranches, again, to try to get increased diversity in the, in the affordable housing stock itself. So the 280 are within the project blocks, and that ties in with the affordable housing covenant. The 10 million in philanthropy is specifically called out in our, in our development agreement, and that is another precondition for the, for the development agreement itself. So that money is raised prior to moving forward.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Coffee Glenn?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. A couple of things I'd like to just, number one, just want to thank you, Ms. A couple of things I'd like to just, number one, just want to thank you, Mr. Chairman and the commissioners, for providing us with an opportunity to really try to lay out the importance and the components as it relates to the project. And one of the things I clearly communicated in conversations that I've had with you individually and as a commission, that we are available at any time as a staff, as an administration working with Navy Hill, to provide updates as often as possible, answer your questions, make sure you're getting the right information. We know that this is a daunting task, as it relates to the voluminous amount of information, not only shared today, but it's available as it relates to the links that you did receive from the secretary as it relates to this project. So I do want to thank you for today, and we're looking forward to coming to you as often as possible, as Ms. Robinson indicated. The city council has made a commitment as it relates to special work sessions, so that we have an opportunity to be in front of the elected body to provide information perhaps and questions that they want answered. So we certainly offer that as an opportunity for us, and I think Ms. Greenfield indicated we may have to look at adding some special opportunities to this body. The other thing I don't want us to miss is the importance of what this project is really about. I know throughout the negotiations, it's not just about an arena, even though it's been the catalyst as it relates to what we want to transform, but it's really about changing people's lives, and I don't want that to get lost. I know the daunting task that this commission will be responsible for, as it relates to the ordinances that Ms. Mullin was able to walk you through. And of course, I understand some of the general questions that you have about the overall projects, there's like 981 pages of, of details about what we're trying to accomplish. But it's about jobs, 21,000 jobs, I think you heard from Mr. Sledge, $300 million in minority contracts, something that's never been done in this city before. The affordable housing components, things that we cannot forget. And coupled with the jobs, it's about job training, but how we provide for our citizens to access opportunities so that they can support their families, but also they can live, work, and play in any area that's not developed. I don't want us to miss that as part of the conversation that we have to have, so that it's going to be critical for us to bring some of our other partners to some of these conversations. We talked a bit about GRTC, but the affordable housing component, I think it's going to be important for us to talk with our housing partners as it relates to asking, at least responding to some of the questions that you've heard from Jack. How do we ensure that we're still building this inclusive community? This is something that's so important to our city as we continue to grow. But there are a couple of things that have to happen as Richmond look at its needs. I know some of the numbers that were in the report, that you've been given a link to, the Hunden Report. I'm hoping that many of you will take the opportunity to go online, or if we need to get hard copies to you, so that you can read and really understand what is being projected as it relates to our economic footprint. If we don't grow our economic footprint, then we still remain to be the same Richmond we are today, and that is not going to support the vitality of this city and its ability to support its sustainability. That is clearly the truth, that is something that cannot be ignored. So I'm hoping that we will have opportunity for more individuals to come in and be part of the conversation, those who have independently reviewed the project and provide not only the administration, but also the elected body with additional information. And I think there will be more due diligence, as, as you've heard, there's been a lot of community outreach. We've made ourselves available, both the administration and Navy Hill, to go into any community, any councilmatic district. We want to be of service as it relates to educating. I know the question coming from Vic regarding, what does the regional partners have to say? Well, as the CEO of the city, I'm in meetings constantly with my regional counterparts, and there's no conversation about what they're doing in their respective localities. So for me, it is important for us to focus on Richmond, and certainly there's no offense to having dialogue about what they think or have opinion as it relates to this project. We have to make a decision for what we want for this community, and I think that is something that cannot be forgotten, as we go through our own due diligence, our own questions, getting the answers that will be, I think, important for us, not only as the commissioners, but also as we provide an opportunity to recommend this project to city council or not. The due diligence that we have to do as a community is critical and should be primary for all of us. So I'm hoping that we will look at more opportunities for the commissioners. I'm hoping all the questions that were asked are being memorialized so that we can ensure that the translation is not lost, and that we're giving you the information that you need, trying to be as complete as possible with answering your questions. So I know you indicated at our meeting next Monday, perhaps we'll have more discussion about what to do as it relates to the timeline. We will work together with Navy Hill to lay out a series of recommendations as it relates to how we provide more information. I think Ms. Robertson said there's probably a foundational priority of information and how it's provided, to ensure that we're building on the foundation of answering all of your questions, ensuring that you're getting the best information possible as it relates to this project. I want to make sure I am available to each of you as it relates to responding to any questions that you may have with the administration. But as a whole, I want to make sure that we're providing what is necessary for the commission, so that you conduct your due diligence, and whatever the decision might be at the end of the day, it's not because we've not offer to be of service to you in providing whatever support with documentation or other numbers as it relates to the projections. We just want to be of service, and I don't want you to, to forget that as it relates to the appeal that we've made as an administration to all of you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Robertson.
Just a last recommendation, Mr. Chair, and that is, several questions have been asked, and I think it would be good for the questions that we are, have asked and answers that we are expecting to, if the staff could compile those and send those back to us so that if for some reason we missed something, we can put that in and, and make sure that we have those questions before us, as we move forward, so that we're covering those bases. And to get that information back, I was trying to take notes, but I couldn't keep up, so.
Well, I noticed Ms. Mullin furiously taking notes of questions. I'm sure our secretary has done the same, and the director has, so between the three of them and Mr. Sledge, I'm sure that they'll have that, that list to compile for us, but that would be very helpful if we could have that. Any other questions from members of the commission? I do want to thank all of you, Mr. Hallmark, Mr. Sledge, Ms. Mullin, for this wonderful presentation. This is our first step of getting the information necessary for us to consider these six ordinances in conjunction with the overall project, but I understand that our purview is this, these six ordinances. But thank you very much, and we appreciate and look forward to working with all of you to make a good decision on this for the city of Richmond.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and Planning Commissioner.
And with that, we're adjourned.